Welcome to tonight's trustee meeting. Happy to have you all here. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
DeVarty here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Landau?
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Here.
Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us for the evening, and do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Thank you. The agenda stands approved. Tab A, approval of the minutes from our last meeting. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the January 25, 2022 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Is there any discussion, any corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Thank you. The minutes stand approved. Moving into citizen participation, verbal communications, leading with the WCC Education Association, Ms. Kissel, welcome.
Get adjusted. All right. Well, now my screen won't turn for me. Let's try that. Well, it's February 2022, and for many of us, the sunshine and hints of warmer weather give us much to look forward to. But what is also very real is the grind we find ourselves in. For two years, what we do and how we do it has changed more than we could ever could have imagined. And when there are moments that make us think that we might see the end of the pandemic, we are excited yet wonder what this all looks like on the other side. No matter one's position at this institution, there is an undeniable exhaustion, even around the most mundane issues. For those in leadership roles, we wonder how best to proceed, what makes the most sense, what issues are most important. In routine, the WCC EA has found some peace of mind and is ready to look ahead. At the January WCC EA Board Meeting, our negotiation team was approved, and Jason Withrow will be guiding us as the chief negotiator again. Chris Barrett, Allison Fornier, Nikki Lee, and Tim Van Schoijk will join Jason and me for this year's negotiations, and they are already hard at work helping to find those issues important to the membership. The WCCA is also readying for our annual board elections, and this will happen on March 3rd. While most of those currently serving are again on the ballot, we will welcome some new faces to our board. And I cannot thank the WCCA representatives enough for their dedication to their colleagues and this institution. Over 90% of those eligible to join the WCC EA are members, and we continue to develop many ways for them to have a voice in all that happens at WCC. As the MEA notes, it is through collective action that we can impact education to improve the lives of our students and educators. We do not have any grievances this month. However, this afternoon, I heard from a number of department chairs and faculty about changes to the spring, summer, and fall schedules. At this time, I'm not aware of the extent of the changes or how it might impact staffing, but I did reach out to President Blanca to be clear about the potential impacts. In my request for details from President Blanca, I learned that EVP Hearns is working with the deans to modify schedules where modality options were limited. What remains true, though, is that some of the changes were made before department chairs were aware that they were even happening. And contractually, the WCC EA wants to be sure that no full-time or adjunct faculty will have their rights of first refusal violated in the course of these changes. As the contract supports collaboration with the administration, we expect to be included in the conversations that affect faculty scheduling. So over these two years that I've been president of the WCCA, I have found that these monthly addresses are a chance for me to reflect and connect to what is most important for the membership. The increased retirement rates, the fact that the college is averaging 39 full-time vacancies compared to our budgeted 25, certainly creates stress on our campus. We all know that there are continuous hiring and rehiring in our future. Much of what I'm reading these days focuses on what employees and employers are expecting in this post-pandemic workplace. Of course, none of it is surprising, as it mirrors what our students expect. Flexibility so family and personal interests can be a priority, remote opportunities, reimagining what we think of productivity, greater diversity and creativity, and opportunities to learn and grow professionally. Embracing these changes as we grieve the loss of the old ways is happening at the same time, in fits and spurts. However, the reality is that we have changed, we are changing, and we must continue to change to meet the demands of the community. And the WCCA is ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening? Vanessa, were there any written comments?
There was none received.
None received. All right. Thank you. Special reports. We have a public safety update with EVP Blakey and interim Chief Zekman. Welcome, ladies. A lot of exercise to present before the committee tonight, yeah.
I had you done.
Thank you for being here.
So, thank you for having us this evening. We're going to provide, this is interim chief Jamie Zekman, who you met earlier when she was hired as the deputy chief. So we were asked to provide a public safety update, which we last did in June of 2020. So the mission of the Community College Department of Public Safety is to create a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community. We will ensure the protection of each person's constitutional rights, and that all people are treated with equality, respect, and compassion, so that they may focus on their educational development. The department and all employees are also committed to supporting the overarching institutional mission of the college. So the core values of the Department of Public Safety are intended to guide and inspire our behavior every day. They reflect pride, and the pride is professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. So the vision and philosophy of the Public Safety Department is to be the leader in providing safety and service to our campus community. We will establish community relationships and partnerships in order to create a culture where safety is the responsibility of everyone. So we have, you know, see something, say something across campus. Our partnerships will foster trust, mutual respect, and cooperation with all members of our community. And the Department of Public Safety will be integrated into the culture and be a resource for everyone. So, you know, you remember when we first established our Department of Public Safety, it was, we had, it was, we felt it was very important for us to have our own officers on campus. So we control the hiring and the training of the officers. And they're integrated into our campus culture. And that allows for whenever there's any kind of possible criminal activity, we can handle it through a student conduct process rather than the criminal court system. So you can see we have campus presence on a lot of different activities. We have community policing. Our officers are visible, and they're integrated on campus. They know our faculty, staff, and students. They're approachable, they provide support, and we choose officers with years of experience in community policing, with a focus on support, not enforcement. So we had our Welcome Back Day this past fall, and Public Safety had officers there. We had a table set up to give out goodie bags. They also participated on Halloween. We had trunk retreat activities on Campus Green, and they did a trunk that was very popular that day. So our Public Safety Staffing, we have our Chief of Public Safety and Emergency Management is that vacancy, Jimmy is our interim chief, but that vacancy is currently posted. We are just about to start interviews. Our deputy chief, Jamie Zekman, we have Sergeant Paul Gomez, and our resource officers are Cameron Bauer, David Pascoe, and David Shoemaker. And we also have a vacancy there, which are also posted, and we're currently getting ready to begin interviews for that position as well. So again, and then we also have in our department, we have full and part-time Public Safety Patrolers, which are non-sworn. We have full and part-time dispatchers, because we're open 24/7. And we have a full-time security and fire alarm systems technician that's in this department as well. So again, we have seven officers. Currently, we have two vacancies that are posted. When we go through a hiring process, we have a very broad interview screening committee and KUZA faculty, a counselor, academic dean, the dean of students, the executive director of the Police Academy, the dean of WTMC, we have an OPT representative, a student representative, chief of public safety, and myself. So when we are going to hire a sworn officer, again, there's extensive interviews and background checks, a much more extensive background check than kind of our regular staff. We also do psychological testing that is completed prior to hire. Our officers, our current officers have over 84 years of community policing experience, and our current officers are 60% minority or female. So the training that we have is, we consider is proactive, not reactive. All of our officers have multiple trainings in anti-bias and implicit bias, interaction with mentally ill as first responders, which has certainly been used more recently with, during COVID, de-escalation techniques, verbal judo, our conflict resolution, ethics in law enforcement, as well as hazmat for our first responders, firearms training, community policing, as I indicated, first aid CPR. They're also trained on how to send out rave messages with our rave emergency dispatching, and also CLEARI training. It's also important that we have our sworn officers that serve as members of our BIT team. So our care team is our behavioral intervention team on campus. Certainly during the last few years, our care team referrals from staff have increased dramatically, and so during the pandemic, and so having officers being able to assist with some of the issues that we've had with mental health emergencies, where sometimes we have to do, conduct a wellness check for an individual, or we coordinate with another law enforcement agency, depending on the location of that student, to conduct that So, in the fall of 2021, the department purchased body cameras. We purchased a camera called BodyWorn, and all of our sworn police officers are wearing body cameras while they're on duty. It's best practice for accreditation, and we chose a style camera that fits into a chest pocket on our shirts so that they're more discreet, and so they don't get lost if we have to run, or if we, so we won't drop them. Here's a picture of Sergeant Gomez sporting one of the body cameras. It's very difficult to see in the polo shirt, and it's also controlled with a watch that you wear on your wrist, so you can activate the camera discreetly when you need to do Public Safety is involved in a number of activities on campus. Right now, we have a system, our RMS system, our Report Management System, is through Clemis, and Clemis is involved, let me see. There are several police departments in the area on southeast Michigan who are involved with Clemis. We have 800 megahertz radios that were obtained as part of Washtenaw Community College's Public Safety Millage, and we also have access to MEAN, the Law Enforcement Information Here's a graph of our calls for service the past three years. It looks like there's a steady decline since COVID took place. However, I want to reiterate that those numbers for the past year would be a little bit higher if we were logging all of our fire watches. The ML building, currently, we have to do a fire watch every hour on the hour when construction crews go home, and those numbers, I think we've had about 2,000 since November. So those numbers are a little bit skewed on the graph.
We have a question, chief. What's a fire watch?
Fire watch occurs when a department's fire alarms are not active. So right now, the ML building has a construction project going on, and the fire alarm is not monitoring that. So our officers, our DPS officers walk through the building every hour during that to be in compliance with the fire code.
And those would normally be a call for service?
Yes, we would count that as a call for service.
If you said that they're not being.
But we don't enter them into Clemis just because of the amount of extra work.
But they're on this table?
They are not included on that, in those numbers.
Okay. Would it be possible to get some kind of breakdown of what kind of calls for service?
Yeah.
Whether they're for health emergencies, or assault, response to assaults, or thefts from vehicles, or from backpacks on campus, you know, whatever they might be. I don't know how they break them down, or how you log them in different categories.
Yes, they are logged in different categories, and we can get a list for you.
Great.
We've had Clemis since the fall of 2018, so that's where I would draw my information from.
Thank you very much.
Bicycle patrols are a good addition to the Police Department for community policing. It allows our officers to be more integrated into the community, they're more approachable, they're more visible. Right now, we have two bicycles purchased. We have three officers who do ride bike during patrol, and that program started last summer. Here's Officer Bauer with his bike. We have a CERT team on campus, Community Engagement Response Team established on campus. There are currently 25 staff who completed over 21 hours of training for CERT. Volunteers, it educates volunteers about disaster preparedness for the hazards that may impact our area on campus. And the training includes disaster response skills, fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. Here are some pictures of people training for CERT. These folks went through FEMA IS317 online training courses, and they also attended seven sessions that are three hours each, a total of 21 hours. They attend quarterly training sessions that are two hours each.
Another question.
Yes?
Trustee DeVarty.
On these CERT teams, what, who are the employees? Are they the public safety staff? Do they include faculty or other office staff?
The instructors.
Yeah, right. I'm just wondering who, no, not the instructors, but the people that take the training, that get trained.
It's anyone who wanted to volunteer. So we have volunteers from across campus.
And it's just up to them? Do they, and do they get paid for that time? And they take it away from their other time on campus, their other work hours? I'm just curious. I'm not.
Yes, we had training like during, where they were able to come during their work hours, so they didn't have to not get paid while they were getting trained.
Okay. And I'm just curious, Javier, who's getting trained? Are you seeing faculty members?
We had volunteers, yeah, we had, but we'll get you a list of volunteers. It's volunteers from all different, yeah, all different staff. Some faculty, some custodial maintenance, some OPTs.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay. We have many county partners. We've hosted active threat tabletop exercises in the past, with the last one being last fall, with eight local law enforcement agencies, first responder agencies, including the FBI, the state police, St. Joe's Hospital, and Huron Valley Ambulance. We've purchased the staff and trained them in emergency medical tourniquets with the Stop the Bleed program, and we've also trained them with quick clot products for rapid response to mass casualty events. And staff participated in countywide active threat trainings. This is a copy of the cover of our annual security report that is located on DPS's webpage, and it contains all of our CLEARI statistics for the past three years, along with all the programs that we do for crime prevention. Accreditation is one of our top goals at DPS right now. We're seeking accreditation through the International Association of Campus Law Enforcement Administrators, referred to as IACLA. The ultimate goal of this accreditation is enhanced service delivery and the development and implementation of best practice procedures. Washtenaw Community College will be the first higher education institution in Michigan to be accredited in IACLA. And it's also very important to note that we are 27, 24/7 police department on campus, and we still provide very quick response. That's the end.
Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Davis?
IACLA. So we're the first higher education institution in Michigan to be accredited. Is that?
We will, we're still in the accreditation process. So we will be.
Oh, okay.
Right, so we're still, it's a long, it's a long process that we're going through.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, is that, we are entering this accreditation process because now we have our own officers on campus? That's what that is?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. And how, and then that takes like a year, two?
Actually, it's a three-year process.
Oh, okay. Well, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ruth?
I have two questions. One is how many patrolers, full-time and part-time, are there? These are.
Non-sworn?
Yeah. Are they what we used to call security?
Yes, yes. Currently, we have, let me see, I have to throw it down here. We have 11 non-sworn employee patrolers, and we have seven dispatchers. When we talk about patrolers, we have three full-time patrolers and eight part-time. And we also have, for dispatchers, we have three full-time dispatchers and four part-time dispatchers.
And there was some, there was some idea of what it takes, but what do you consider, how do you integrate into a culture? You know, you talked a lot, several places, you talked about integrating the police into the culture of WCC. What does that mean?
We want to be the ones that people contact when they need something. We want to provide that service, whether we can accomplish it or not, we want them to call us, and so we can help them, help them. We want to be visible, so that people around campus are comfortable approaching us and coming to us when they have a problem. It's attending programs, you know, unfortunately with COVID, we've seen a reduction in programs on campus, but the more that things begin to open up, the more you're going to see us again at programs, so we can communicate with people and talk and form relationships and partnerships.
Thank you.
And back to trustee DeVarty.
I'm glad that we were able to receive some of the public safety millage money that was countywide, approved by voters to augment what we put into our program. Right now, it looks like we have a number of officers of seven. I remember when we first started the Police Department, we were talking about four sworn officers. So that's an increase of three, and I have to admit.
That was officers beyond the chief, so.
Right, so that makes five. So now we have, now I'm looking at this with seven.
Right, so we have our chief and our supervisor, which is our deputy chief, and then four sworn officers.
So I'm guessing that there's been an increase in the budget for this Police Department over the course of the last three years, or however long since we implemented it. I'd be interested in seeing what that budget is over that time, each year.
Okay, we can get that for you.
And then I've got the breakdown of what the calls are for coming. I'm also aware, and I think this is great, that we're able to do this, to provide support for our neighboring police agencies when they request support. Because I know for a fact that when there was a protest aimed at the county sheriff's department jail, that we had a couple officers stationed off-campus to help with monitoring traffic that people reported.
That's correct, because they use Washtenaw parking lots sometimes as a staging area for those protests.
Right, and I think it's great that we have those cooperative relationships, and I think it's vital that for any public safety department in the area, that we build those relationships, because if any large-scale emergency should happen, having those working relationships is vital.
That's correct.
So I'm very happy about that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Zekman, EVP Blakey, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a diversity and inclusion presentation, an update for Dean Reed. Dean Reed, are you with us? There he is.
The floor is yours.
All right. Good evening. I have the pleasure of sharing our diversity and inclusion update for the 2021, 2022 year. So first, we'll start off by reviewing our board policy, then share some of the activities we've engaged in over this last year, and then some of the rest of the activities that we have for the rest of the semester. So just going back, looking at Board Policy 828, where it states, "WCC promotes the awareness and appreciation of cultural differences and commonalities among students, the community, and staff groups, seeking to build community, unity, and learning. Furthermore, WCC promotes a climate of access, success, and equity for all people, regardless of their demographic, their socioeconomic status, race, religion, and so forth and so on." So, you know, all of the activities that you'll see in this, or initiatives you'll see in this slide, you know, really is founded on this work, and it guides us to what we want to strive to become. So, building off of that board policy statement, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion is really founded on our purpose as students, students' access, success, equity, and inclusion. When we deal with access, we are looking at the community and making sure students have the ability and the access to come to WCC, no matter their socioeconomic status or race, or the zip code that they live in. So we do outreach initiatives to break down any of those barriers. And then success, we're equipping those students with the tools that they need to be successful here at the college. And then when we talk about equity, we're looking at our services, our instruction, and then making sure we're meeting those varying needs, depending on that particular student population we're looking at. And then inclusion is just about our staff and faculty, building a community where everybody feels like they can not only survive, but even thrive on campus, and make it through their degrees, and feel like this is a place where they belong. So I'd like to introduce our team members, Christina Doe, who is the coordinator of student inclusion, and Mia Lanier-Durkins, the coordinator of student engagement. The coordinator of student inclusion primarily focuses on many of our Cultural Heritage Month programming, so MLK, a lot of those events, right now is Black History Month, many of those events, and even some professional development for faculty and staff. Mia, her role focuses on the HBCU Pathway Initiative, and then even spreading awareness of our CTE programs. Both of these positions were prior positions, they've just been redefined, so the funding had already existed, and then one of the positions is partially funded by a grant I would receive from the state.
Are either of them in the house today?
Ah, no, they're not here. So we had the pictures right there.
Well, that's good, because I keep getting emails from Mia, or Maya, and I'm like, well, who is she?
Okay. So I'd like to talk about access and success. Last summer, we had the opportunity to partner with Ypsilanti Community Schools and for the Boots on the Ground campaign, and that's what it literally was. We went around Ypsilanti, door to door, knocking on doors, telling them about the programs that we have at WCC, engaging the families and the youth in those programs, providing awareness of our scholarships enrollment, but we really even helped our partner reengage students for the upcoming school year. In the picture, you'll see some of our adult transition staff, even Congresswoman Debbie Dingell partnered with us as well, as we went around the neighborhoods. So to continue on on our outreach this year, especially this month, we've hit the ground running. This month alone, in February, we have 14 visits at some of the high school districts that you see in this picture, and even the community organization, Girls Group. Those 14 visits have already translated into impact. So far, for our high school scholarships, which is our presidential Procasini Excellence, we've already received 40 scholarships from Ypsilanti Community Schools alone, and that is a 1,000% increase compared to where we were at last year. Around this time last year, we only had four applications. So, you know, that outreach we're doing, we're raising awareness about our application process, about our scholarships, the HBCU Pathway, CTE programs, everything that we're doing. So we've partnered with the recruitment outreach team, and we've been having a great time reaching out to students and families about this.
President Blanca?
Thank you. Dr. Reed, could you tell them a little bit about, very briefly, about the HBCU Pathway and who we are partners with?
And who Mia partners with?
Who we are partners with in the HBCU Pathway.
Sure.
The four universities. Oh, you're going to tell us later?
Yeah.
Okay, forget it, I'll be quiet.
Okay. But yeah, that's a huge, there's a lot of excitement about, around that. But yeah, we're really excited to continue this. But yeah, we're really excited to continue this, um, this outreach with our local partners. So looking at our minority student enrollment, um, we're, a lot of that outreach we're doing is letting us regain some of the students we lost due to COVID, um, in the year of Fall twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty. So you'll see that there was a dip, but you know, we're steadily headed up, um, in the right direction to, to get those students back. So we're going to continue doing this outreach that we've been doing in the community, um, the partnerships we've had with the workforce development division at Harriet Street and Park Ridge, that's helping out, um, along with initiatives that, um, as far as HBCU and CTE, that's also helping out as well. Let me go back. Okay, so, um, HBCU Pathway, which was launched last Fall semester, um, is off to a great start. We have five partners, Jackson State University, which is in Jackson, Mississippi, Mississippi Valley State University is about an hour and a half away, Lane College in Memphis, Tennessee, Southern University of New Orleans, most recently Central State University, um, down near Wilber Forest, Forest, Ohio. Um, this was initially started as a transfer and student success initiative, but we're really recognizing the value that people are, um, taking into this, this opportunity, and it's becoming more of a recruitment tool. Um, you know, building on top of the prestige that we already had as a college. We, we are a premier institution for students to not only, you know, come to WCC, but see it as a starting place to where they can have their journey and eventually get to HBCU. So, you know, this has really been, um, helping us get students back that we lost that might have taken, um, a gap year last year, uh, because of the pandemic. So we're getting some of those students back. And to talk more about the success, so far, we've already received thirty student applications for the HBCU Pathway, um, program in particular. And we've already had two students that have reached out to us when we launched and say, hey, I'm interested in transferring this semester. And they are at, um, two HBCUs, Clark Atlanta University and North Carolina AT, which you'll notice that, that's not our partners, but, you know, we encourage students to, the value of our partnerships, which is guaranteed admission and in-state tuition at those HBCUs. But some students have other reasons, so we'll help any student transfer to the HBCU choice that they want to go to. So our STEM Scholars Initiative, um, has been around for several years, but has demonstrated a lot of success. You know, this is to the point to where we have ninety scholars, um, the program is at capacity. There is a waitlist for students, so we're looking at ways to where we can serve as more students. But even our staff and faculty have really bought into the value and became mentors, and that has, you know, went from eighteen to thirty-two staff and faculty who became mentors, um, at the college for the STEM Scholars. The transfer rate, thirty-five percent transfer rate. The national transfer weight rate across the country is only twenty percent, so that's fifteen percentage points above the national transfer rate for the STEM Scholars. And even our own institutional transfer rate is above the national transfer rate at twenty-nine percent. So, you know, this learning community is tight-knit support that the STEM Scholars, uh, staff has done, has really helped students get to that destination. And we've become a premier STEM destination, um, and we'll keep doing that. Students are getting, um, scholarship oppo, I mean internship opportunities, research opportunities at, um, the local colleges. We have a grant, um, called the SSTEM Grant to where we can provide up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand in scholarships from this grant to students, and that's really making an impact. There's one student, um, that recently transferred this, uh, winter semester to U of M. That student was a single parent, a single mother, um, worked full-time, and now at U of M can utilize her full pay, her full financial aid because of that scholarship that she had here where she did not have to use, um, that financial aid. And you'll see, um, so the purpose of this is to diversify the STEM field, you know, increase the number of minorities and women that go in the STEM field. So you'll see the grab, show some of our representation of demographics. Um, you know, the, the transfer institutions have grown each semester. We've had the STEM Scholars Initiative. Um, now until this semester, we had eighteen students, um, transfer. You know, U of M is one of our biggest partners. Um, you see the higher signs on there, engineering is some of the majors, EMU, we have students transfer there, but we're expanding those opportunities. Um, even some of our HBCU schools might become some of those, uh, fall on this listing sometime in the future. But, you know, this is all about student success, building that learning community so students can really go on and see, you know, become the next, next Ayesha Bowe, who was a, um, STEM scholar, and many other scholars that's, um, come to WCCs particularly for this program. So the Alpha Scholars Program, you know, I just talked about the STEM Scholars, but the Alpha Scholars Program, we want to model what the STEM Scholar's success is looking like right now. Currently, right now, we have hundred and twenty-three scholars. Um, and just to remind you, the Alpha Scholars Program, we were able to implement it based off of the Title III grant that we got from the Department of Education. And, um, right now, we have twenty-five percent of those students are minority students. And just like the STEM Scholars, we're, we're already demonstrating some success. You know, ninety-four percent of students that start in the Fall end up coming back for the winter semester. That's nine percent above our overall first-time in any college student. So students that are just, you know, the same students that are first time, you know, they're almost ten percent above that, that persistence rate of those students. So, you know, we're looking to continue building this program. Students are here, and this is a main, um, retention initiative for students that are in our scholarship initiatives. So some of our scholarships, the Presidential Procasini and Excellence Scholarship, every public school in Washoug County gets a Presidential or Procasini Scholarship. There are five Presidential Scholarships and one Procasini, uh, for every school in Washoug, public school in Washoug County. Um, and then there are, are more Excellent Scholarships. So with that being said, you know, those scholarship students have demonstrated success coming back from Fall to Fall, things like the Alpha Scholars is helping that with that persistence. Um, our scholarship reception that we have prior to the student's first year, we have, uh, we've had it virtual the last couple of years, but we, um, it's still, you know, a good evening, or, you know, it is an evening where the parents and the families can come and learn about our services. But really, even our president joins on just to welcome the students. So those type of initiatives, equipping the students, and then after that, they're, um, matched with a, a success coach to help them guide them through the way. So as you'll see, you know, our Fall to Fall retention for scholarship students, it was at eighty-four percent, and that's well above our overall FIDIA one-year retention rate as well. So these retention strategies that I just mentioned, they not only impact the Alpha Scholars, the STEM Scholars, or the scholarship students, but general, in general, you know, overall, like when it comes to our coaching services, our advising, you know, a lot of these things have had a broader impact than just the students in those groups. So you'll see that, um, just in general, all students, not just first-time students, all students, you know, the one-year retention from Fall to Fall, we've had the highest rate we've had in the last four years at fifty-nine percent. And then just for first-time students, first time in any college, uh, we've also had the highest rate we've had at seventy-one percent. And then our graduation rate, we've, um, met our goal of that twenty to twenty that we established, um, twenty, twenty percent by two thousand and twenty that we established several years ago. We've exceeded that at twenty-seven percent. Um, right now, Fall eighteen shows twenty-two percent, but we still have several months to, to keep tracking to, um, get to that twenty-seven percent. So it's very likely that we might exceed that twenty-seven percent. So all of these efforts have really led to these increases that we've, um, seen in retention and completion. Our Student Success Conference, um, earlier when I talked about like some of our things that we want to do, our four pillars, access, success, equity, inclusion, the Student Success Con- Conference really equips the students prior to their first start of their, um, first semester. Here, so we've been doing that for several years now. We've seen increases in persistence from Fall to Winter for the students that attend those conferences. Um, and the number of students that do attend a conference have grown each year. The Recharge Workshop is for returning students, um, that we usually host during the winter semester, just to motivate them for their next semester. Um, and one thing that is really important about the Student Success Conference, we have faculty members have a mini lecture so students can see what a college-level class is like prior to their first semester, um, come here. So that is really great. We have different campus partners that share information about their resources as well. But this Recharge Workshop has really, you know, grown, um, in the number of students attending. And I think it's really important because as we have more of the reconnect student population, other students who haven't been here in a while, they simply want to come just to get back in school mode and know some of that school smart, um, navigating the college system. Um, Executive Vice President Hearns does a great job of just answering some of those questions, and they're able to connect with the executive and get those questions answered. And on the flip side, we're able to learn from those experiences and those questions that, uh, they're asking to inform our practices at the institution. So, um, we're looking to expand the Recharge, um, Workshop to have it every semester just because of that, that nature of students attending and wanting those questions. Let's talk about inclu-, oh.
I just, do you have any sense of how many students you're talking about in the Student Success Conferences in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one?
So going back, um, twenty twenty, oh, let's see. Fall twenty twenty, eighty-six students attended the, um, Student Success Conference. And then Fall twenty-one, one hundred and twenty students attended the, um, Success Conference.
Thank you.
Another question. Trustee DeVarty?
What's the difference between retention rate and persistence rate?
So. So, um, usually retention rate, um, that's used on a year basis, so one-year retention, how many first-year students come back for their second year? Persistence, we try to use that, um, when we're talking about semester to semester, so Fall to Winter, um, in most terms.
Thank you.
So let's talk about inclusion. One thing that's really important when we think about inclusion is thinking about making this a place where students feel like they belong. And that's meaning that we gotta have all of our staff and faculty bought into creating an environment to where, like I said, students not only survive, but they thrive and make it through those academic programs. They feel like it's more than just coursework, it's feel like it's a family environment, home. They see things that they identify with. And that sense of belonging has a connection to student success, persistence, retention, degree completion. There's other benefits as well, such as work rate, morale, and, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion presence, which I'll share a little bit more about in the upcoming slide. So to start off the semester, or each semester, we have an in-service, but this semester, we had Dr. Isa Arce Vega, um, who talked to our faculty, not talked to our faculty, she led our faculty through a very interactive workshop, um, and had them pull out their syllabus and look at those learning outcomes and start from what do we want students to get out of the class? Um, what, what culturally, what are the students en- engaged in? And match those learning outcomes with the culture of the student, the varying student demographic population, those, um, career outcomes that we want them to have, walk them through that and making sure that it does, it maintains the rigor, so making it relevant and rigor by just focusing on equity. Um, and she is a provost at Valencia College in Florida, and, uh, you know, we had her for in-service, and it was a great session that a lot of faculty attended. We're also kicking off our Equity and Education Series. This is a diversity and inclusion training that we'll have, um, on several Fridays throughout the semester. It's a four-part series, and it'll be led by one of our staff members. Um, some of the topics include social identities and social justice, um, skills for dialogue. So these skills will be really important for, um, our faculty to, you know, be able to take advantage of their, their classroom and create classrooms to where students feel like they belong, um, and their classrooms with respect, um, and that's important for them. So we'll also do more things for staff, on the staff side as well. Divisions have also, um, you know, started doing divisional trainings, uh, for diversity as well, so each division will have diversity trainings. And then we also focus on topics such as men in healthcare, women in trades, um, even, you know, just making more inclusive, relevant content within the courses. So, um, for MLK, we had several events, and, um, the MLK Celebration is on our YouTube page for WCC. So if you haven't had a chance, you can go back and look at it. We had Chief Assistant Prosecutor Victoria Burton-Harris, who was the first African-American female to serve in that position. And she just guided us through a discussion on, you know, what the prosecutors, revamping the prosecutor's office from being a gatekeeper of the criminal justice to being a dismantler of the criminal justice by, like, looking at the policies, um, that, that they can change and influence. Then we awarded, um, two staff members and a community member with the Equity and Action Award by Ina Jackson out of the Financial Aid Office, Anthony Williamson, um, from the, uh, Director of College Career Ratingness of Park Ridge and Harriet Street Center. And then Melvin Person, who is the Executive Director of the Weaver People Opportunity Farm. We had a discussion panel. Several of our events, um, over MLK were, were centered around, centered around how we can build the life opportunities for returning citizens. That is, um, individuals who've experienced the incarceration system. So we had a couple people who were returning citizens on that panel, talked about their experiences. We have, also had some staff that talked about works on the workforce development side, you know, what our employer is doing to kind of break down some of those barriers. Uh, people with, um, incarcerated backgrounds go into when they apply for jobs. Um, and then we looked at the programs, like trying to align programs with those employers, like what kind of discussions we need to start having, looking at our programs to better those opportunities for returning citizens. And then lastly, we had our beloved community lunch, um, which was catered by, um, a former WCC student who is now at, now at EMU and a winner of our entrepreneurship pitch competition last year, Lawanda Hollister, who has her own catering company. She shared her story, her experience, um, and then also, you know, some of the barriers that she's faced as a returning citizen. But, you know, also how, you know, WCC and entrepreneurship has helped her build her business. We had two hundred and thirty-one tennies, and what we've seen from this, yeah, sense of belonging, it is helpful, helpful for students, but we've also seen an impact on our staff as well, and our employees, our faculty and staff. We know this is a changing environment. People have been impacted by COVID, um, personally health-wise, you know, um, shifting work things going on. But people, you know, come to campus feeling different every day, but we know for sure when they went to these events, you know, people feel more, you know, revived, especially at the beginning of the semester. They feel more revived, um, they were looking forward to the next one. So it, it kind of increases work morale a little bit with these, uh, diversity programming. So, you know, we're looking forward to having more of these things because people are not only learning about the content, but they're feeling, you know, this is a place where, you know, I can come as a student or as an employee, and I can feel like I'm welcome. Um, we always have First Generation College Student Day. We, twenty-five percent of our students are first-generation college students. And, um, even we have a lot of staff and faculty that come together to celebrate this day. So it's important as a student, when a student is first generation and first in our house, um, to go and complete a college degree, that they feel like they're not alone on this campus, uh, as they're going through classes, going through our services. But we recognize that, and it's not just another day. So we just provide a very small token of celebration that they're on campus, and then connecting them with staff that also had those same experiences. Right now, it's Black History Month. We have several events. Last, uh, Friday was our first event. Um, the portrait to the left, um, you, if you drive through Ypsilanti, um, I can't remember the exact street, but you'll see this portrait of H.B. Jacobs. H.B. Jacobs was a former slave who escaped slavery, came up north, um, and he resided in Ypsilanti. He built several churches and schools in Ypsilanti, but he was a custodial employee at Michigan Normal College, which is now Eastern Michigan University. But the, um, but the coincidence is that H.B. Jacobs founded Jackson State University, went back down south. Jackson State University is one of our HBCU partners. Um, so at this event, we had several, um, administrators from Jackson State on the call, Jackson State alumni, our current HBCU participants and community members that were just learning about the history of H.B. Jacobs and then the impact of HBCUs as well. We have an event this Friday, um, to honor the legacy of Bill Hooks, um, who recently passed this December. We'll be talking about how her work inspired a, um, feminist movement inside of a male prison. Um, and then we have several other events. Even tomorrow, we have an event where we'll be, um, talking about some of WCC's black history, honoring the legacy of Morris Lawrence and the other, um, key figures who have impacted our campus. So we have several events upcoming. Right now, CTE Month, uh, we have several events that's going on actually right now, every day this week to raise more awareness of our career, eh, eh, career and technical education programs that we have on campus. Women's History Month is next month. Um, Superintendent Elena Zachary Ross will be a keynote speaker for our event. We'll also be partnering with Girls Group to, um, do a mini mentoring program virtually with our staff and faculty with the, um, K through twelve youth. Steam Week next week, um, so there'll be, you know, high school students, current students, um, in our STEM Scholars Program doing presentations, keynote speakers, on March first to the third. The Future Founders Internship Program, this opportunity gives, um, students, current WCC students, the chance to get a internship with local tech startups, and the goal is to get more minority and women in these local tech startup, um, business. So the date for that, uh, is due March first, so we're looking to have more students from WCC be represented because this is open to the state. But this is, um, a great partnership we've had with the Ann Arbor Community Foundation for the Future Founders. Um, Michigan Gender and Sexuality Conference is March twelfth. We've had that for three years now. And then Human Library is also coming up again in March, uh, twenty-third, and then we have a couple more events in April. So that concludes the diversity and inclusion update, and, um, thank you for your time.
Are there any questions, Dr. Reed? Best of the night.
Thank you. Your presentation was very good. It was excellent in fact. Um, I want to go back to, um, when you were talking about being in the community and knocking on doors. Uh, from that, um, canvas, do you have any idea about how many students or that potential students, uh, came to the school to register and take classes?
So, um, from that, we did pass out a lot of information, and then we connected students with our admissions team by, with that information. And I myself did get, um, people contacting the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. We don't have a raw number on it, but, you know, just from going out there over five times this summer, you know, the response was great about like even families, not just the K through twelve youth, but families, the parents not even knowing about some of our programs. but families, the parents not even knowing about some of our programs.
Okay, um, because I'm really just interested, um, because through the years, um, we've been in that community for a length of time and I used to work for Washington County. And my job was to be in that community to see about getting them employment, you know, paying for them and, or if they wanted to go to school, come to their school. So, eh, and there was a lot of resentment for some reason. I don't know why, but, you know, whatever it was, I don't know. But in any case, I'm just wondering i- if you had any, um, some type of idea of, from the enthusiasm that they were demonstrating to you at that time, did it carry over to actually applying? That's all.
And now I will say, um, that's kind of related to what you said. You know, some of the things we do, especially like with the HBCU and then like really focusing on the purpose of the CTE. I know it's a broad career in technical education, but actually showing like the value of going to a welding or cybersecurity, you know, is getting more to the why, a community college and why WCC. So that's been helping change that paradigm shift in the mind of, um, and making this a premier destination. So I think that might've had a little impact last summer, just kind of getting more to the past tuition and the things that we traditionally say, a community college, more so looking at the program. So I think some of those reasons kind of help out with that.
Right. And I, I, and I know Mr. Williamson has been doing a fabulous job over there in, um, so, you know, we're, we're aware that, you know, this has been going on for many, many, many years. But, but, but my other question is, is, um, what? You're, 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 you're doing a great job, but my thing is, um, do you feel that asking, how many students, let me put it this way, how many students have shown an interest in going to a HBCU other than the ones that you've shown so far?
Other than the thirty that we put out of interest form? I mean, I would say that we're at the point where, as far as the community, where high schools are requesting us to come out even more to talk to varying groups.
Okay.
So, and community organizations have done that as well. Um, and for instance, this Thursday is our first, um, actual cohort type of thing that we're doing for the current students. Um, and we just sent out the email a week ago. We already have twenty students that's going to show up for that this Thursday. So, you know, there are students on campus that's growing and, and hearing, but we just had that, the one, um, one of the students, they just reached out to us, um, a few weeks ago, just letting us know they're not in the slot, that they did transfer to a HBCU and they just heard about this program. So I think it's really grown from a community aspect. I really think it's a big deal, um, across, eh, I know we focus on Ypsilanti a lot, but even really in Ann Arbor. Um, it's, it's really a big deal and, you know, parents are excited, um, local alumni are excited, the school districts are excited. I can really see this being a big deal for Washington County.
Well, I'm glad you said Ann Arbor. What about, uh, Lincoln, uh, schools?
So Lincoln, so, yeah, yeah, we, we had a, actually, we had an outreach event at Lincoln today. Um, our, our outreach and our, and Mia, she was at Lincoln today. So we are rebuilding like, the relationship with Lincoln, um, even more to get into the school districts more at, at Lincoln.
One more thing and then I'll be through. Um, you mentioned, I think you mentioned something about visiting this HBCU schools. How do students get there? By their parents?
How will they get there?
Yeah. How, how can they go and visit to see if that's the, the school or what school they would like to go to?
So right now, all of our, you know, that, like the actual, you know, interfacing with the HBCUs has been virtual. Like they'll, they'll jump on a call. Some of them, like Mississippi Valley has offered to come up here before. But, um, we will, we want to get to a point of where we can do tours and we're monitoring the, the, the safety and the climate of that. And hopefully around this time next year, you know, the prime opportunity is when students are on winter break. Um, I've done that in my career in the past, took students to college tours and everything. But we want to get to the opportunity where we can actually visit some of those schools. Central State is probably a few hours. I can't, you know, that's not too far away. So, um, you know, but right now, as it speaks, you know, if a student, you know, wants to go, they'll have to do, um, a visit with their family.
And, um, I didn't hear you say anything about Tennessee State.
Tennessee State University, we have, um, reached out, we've reached out to Kentucky State University. Tennessee State is on our backlist to kind of reach out to. Um, and some of the, as the schools get a little bit more bigger and more, you know, have a little bit more popularity, you know, sometimes, you know, it's, it's a little bit like a Howard or Spelman, you know, it's a little bit more, listen, it's a little bit more work to get to that, that, um, memo of agreement and everything. But, you know, students, we definitely want to help students get to those destinations they want to, but we have talked about Tennessee State.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
No, uh, I just wanted to add this real quick. Um, wow, this is just fabulous. Uh, the, the, it's a stark comparison than, from what I have seen in the past on these reports. And I'm just astonished at just like, and look at what a year makes in terms of increasing, um, minority student enrollment, the retention, um, the overall excitement and enthusiasm in participating in their educational endeavors and carrying it on further. And I, I'm almost like, oh geez, you know, we're, we're, let me see your magic wand. I mean, you, I mean, this is just fabulous, but also.
Angela, get on your mic a little better, please.
Can you hear me now? So, you know, and I can't think of the name right now because I am wanting, I'm wanting to talk about it. But as we all know, the HBCU that has opened up in, uh, Detroit.
Oh, yeah.
And that is a limited student population. And, and of course, this would come from like the, the instruction side of, of the school here. But I was thinking, because we have started now this HBCU pathway and you've been successfully reaching out to the other institutions with the partnerships that we have under our belt, that's also, I'm thinking, another avenue that we can look at too, to add on our list for, for the students that are in the graphic designs and business and things of that nature. Because right now they have a program where they're, um, designing, having the students to, you know, come up with their own, um, gym shoe design. So it's like, wow, you know, that's perfect. So I just wanted to bring that up, you know, have like a seed for development to, to, to think on. Yes, down there in Detroit. I mean, they're just right next door to us. That's something, you know, I wanted to put on your plate too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Anything further? Trustee DeVarty?
I just want to say I've been really excited by the, uh, our partnership with the HBCUs and look forward to growing it. The, um, we, it's been a couple of years since I've been on campus on a more regular basis. But I remember a college day where representatives from different colleges came and had tables at the Student Center and set up tables to kind of offer, uh, incentives or recruitment information about their four-year institutions to our students. Is that happening still?
So out of our transfer center, we have, um, a transfer week every semester to where Michigan State, you have all of our in-state, but we are also having our HBCUs and it is virtual. Um, for right now, they're, they're also having sessions to where they'll, they'll be on those calls as well.
But there's nothing like that happening on campus at this point because of, since COVID started?
Not, not on, not on campus.
Okay. Um, the reason I ask if we start that again, um, it would be great to have some of those HBCUs actually have a physical presence where there are per people here and can engage students that haven't even thought or don't even know what HBCUs are. The opportunity in walking by, uh, a table with one of these big, um, Campus Day or, you know, College Day recruitment things going on. Could learn about these opportunities and maybe engage some students that otherwise, uh, wouldn't even be aware that these opportunities exist.
Absolutely.
So it's, I know it's future-looking as this pandemic becomes more of an endemic. And it's just something we live with, uh, day to day is, is opposed to something we treat as an emergency situation every day.
Absolutely. And, and one thing to add to that, um, the alumni have, of those HBCU, there's chapters all around Southeast Michigan. Um, they've become ambassadors of those HBCUs. So for instance, the Central, um, State University, uh, representative, we talk almost every other week. Anthony Webster was a former employee here at WCC. He's the president of Jackson State University. So they kind of, uh, do bring some of that interface too as well, in addition to bringing the admissions rep here.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher.
Oh, did you?
I just want to pick up on, uh, Trustee McKnight Morton's, uh, thought about, thoughts about visits to the schools. Any way that we can promote that or make that happen, um, whether it's maybe providing access to field trips to these schools, um, at some, to A school or a couple of the schools during spring break and make that available to some of our students. Um, that, I, I think that's a great idea, whatever we can do to make that happen, to bring our students to these campuses, um, to actually see them in person and maybe, uh, light a fire.
Absolutely.
Trustee Hatcher.
Um, I'm reminded that the, um, I don't know, Kim, the Ann Arbor Public Schools used to have a bus tour of HBCUs back in the day. And I don't think they do that anymore. So, um, it's still a possibility, right?
It is still a possibility. And what we did when we first started the program was we talked to a lot of community organizations. And so the nice part is that when we get to a point where we can do tours again, there's a lot of community organizations that we can partner with, with the do them. I think that the NAACP locally in Ann Arbor was the latest organization that did the tours, maybe in two thousand eighteen or nineteen.
Yeah, because I remember that. My, my other, my real question was, um, uh, for the hun, first of all, I'm exhausted by your report and the work that you do have made me tired. Okay?
That's a compliment, isn't it?
I think so, yeah. Although I'm easily tired the older I get. Um, and the hundreds of students that are involved in, um, these various programs, what are we doing, um, as we recruit students who aren't really prepared for WCC? In terms of student success? Is there something going on for them or before they come or, or something like that?
We have been, um, recently.
Uh-uh. No, I asked him.
Okay.
We have been recently having, uh, more leading partnerships, close partnerships. Things that have not ever been done. Um, and not just use that as an example, we're really working with. developing type of, um, you know, summer prep or whatever it might be. I know we have, we do have some bridge programs, but, you know, going beyond looking at different college ratings, that's the way to look for college ratings. On campus for those college days, during our O B building, looking at those. We're looking at that more, even looking at our current students, looking at, you know, how they're doing in certain courses, basically writing it down by. We're, we're tying down, even with our ministers, that the students.
Yeah, because we have thousands of students and only several hundred involved in these programs. So I'm concerned about the other seven hundred as well. But thank you. You want to say something?
We have some more comments from the floor?
I was just going to add that, you know, you all have seen Target X and it's allowed us to be a lot more proactive as students come into the system, so we can match them with the needs that they have. So when students apply, they can tell us, you know, what kind of help they might need, what areas they need assistance. And we can look at things in a more proactive way. So our goal is to match many of those students, even if they're not coming to larger programs with the, with the needs that they have, that we actually have programs and services for.
That was big. Thank you.
President Blanca?
I'll, I'll be good this time. Happy birthday. Today is Dr. Reed's birthday. And, uh, did an excellent job. And you do an excellent job. And I want to thank you for your leadership um, and your enthusiasm. Um, it's a big, you know, you've been here two years, two years? One? Wow. Okay, that's really good. That's really good. Um, so as I pointed out, it's just really very good. And I, if you don't, I might, I'd like to thank, uh, Vice President Hearns because, um, if you look at the scores, remember we were concerned about the FIDAC scores and about, um, how we were doing. And, and, um, you know, thank you for your leadership in, uh, keeping this going and energizing this and the HB SCU? Am I saying HBCUs? Um, that was, that was an excellent, uh, partnership. And, uh, Dean, I'm not Dean, uh, but, um, yeah, Dean, Victor Vega, Dr. Vega. Thank you for the STEM work. STEM scholars, um, working with them. I appreciate that. And I'd like to thank all of you that have contributed and your faculty and staff that have worked hard to make all of this a reality. So, thank you.
Any further questions, trustees? Thank you, Dr. Reed. Thank you for your report. And that concludes our special reports. We're going to move into monthly reports now. Um, tab B in the agenda. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion support? Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The personnel recommendations stand approved. Thank you. Uh, next are our financial reports. Uh, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for January twenty twenty-two as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. And before we, uh, move on that, Executive Director Hun Holtz, would you like to shed some light on the financial reports for us this evening?
Today, uh, and as he would, I just wanted to go through a couple of highlights for us.
Can you get a little closer on that microphone, Ben? Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so I'm going to skip through the narrative and, and focus on the, the numbers page here. So first and foremost, tuition and fees, you will note, we continue to remain, uh, positive to budget. Uh, winter tuition is primarily finalized now. I will have a little bit of movement here in the preceding months. But, uh, all in all, that's things, we think that's where we will end up the year. Um, but we, by the strength of our fall and, and fees revenue, we are positive for the year. Um, local property taxes, again, we are seeing a continued trend of, uh, a positive variance to budget. Uh, we expect at this point that we will meet or exceed budget, uh, as we approach our fiscal year end. Uh, state appropriations, again, continues to trend, uh, around the five to six hundred thousand dollar positive variance to budget. Uh, trade partnerships, as we mentioned, uh, was buoyed by the strength of our trade partnership programs that ran last fall that were primarily unbudgeted or augmented. Um, and then one other area of note on the revenue side, uh, the other revenue, you'll note, uh, a variance there to budget, budget, positive variance to budget of a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, that's primarily due to our non-credit training programs. Um, we've seen a, a large increase in those programs as we've had some HERF scholarships and CARE scholarships that we've been able to offer to, to some of these, um, high-demand job programs. Uh, on the cost side, uh, the trends remain the same, kind of continuation of what we've seen through the first six months have continued in January. Um, our positive year-to-date variance has increased from about two point two to two point six million. That really sums up the highlights, but I certainly would answer any questions anybody had.
Trustees' questions? Trustee DeVarty? Nothing? Trustee Hatcher?
Is it, um, feasible, uh, traditional, acceptable in these reports to list the, um, it's on some different page, maybe, the unrestricted and unallocated funds? The total of those?
We can find out.
Sure, of course.
I mean, on a regular basis, put it at the bottom or at a different pa- I don't know. Because, um, as I look through the rest of the evening, there's a million going here and half a million going there. And I'd just like to know how our, um, unrestricted and unallocated is surviving all of that.
Of course. Of course.
On a regular basis somewhere. Thank you.
President Blanca.
Thank you. Trustee Hatcher?
Yeah?
After, could you repeat what you said to me so I can write it down, because I can understand what your base.
I'll never remember.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I think we used to do that. I don't know when it stopped, but I know that we used to do that.
We can certainly look into that.
We'll look at that.
Sure.
Absolutely.
There could have been a reason why it stopped.
Yeah, maybe it's not done, but it's just, the well keeps, is it going to run dry? I worry about that.
Well, I wouldn't worry about it, but I think because of the front, how the balance looks, but, but there's probably a reason why, I don't know. I just know it used, we used to do that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for standing in for VP Barnes, good job. Again, the motion before the board is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for January 2022 as follows, general fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
No.
We have a motion and we have support. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The financial reports are accepted, thank you. Remarks of members of the Board of Trustees, anybody have any remarks to share with us this evening? Trustee Landau.
Thank you, Chair Milliken. I wanted to, let me preface these remarks by saying that I rarely, for variety, I think of good reasons, intervene in the operations of the college in anything other than a macro level, but recently, some, a concern was brought to me by constituent or a set of concerns about the relative absence of in-person classes for the fall of 2022. So I took the liberty of asking President Blanca for some numbers, which she provided and are available to the rest of the board. The, the concern that I have is that if we look at the in-person offerings, in fall of 2019, 79.3% of our classes were, were virtual with the balance, well, I mean, were in-person, with the balance being online and virtual. And in contrast, for the fall of 2022, that would be, I guess, this September, 49.1% of the classes were, are in-person, 29.3% online and 21.6 virtual. And, which, to be quite frank, isn't that big of a increase over last fall. Last fall, we were at 36.9% in-person, and right now, with the current calendar, the way it is, we're looking at 49.1%. When you drill down into the numbers, there's some other concerns that come to mind. If you look at just humanities, that division, in-person, in the fall of 2019, was 76% in-person for the fall of 2022, is 37.7%. And similarly, for math, science, and engineering, 85.1% in the fall of 2019 were in-person, and we're proposing that the fall of 2022 is 50.7%. And not to belabor this point, but when you drill down at the numbers further, there are other concerns that become even more stark, especially given, I think, some of the needs of our students for in-person education. In math, 82.44% of classes were in-person prior to the pandemic. Currently, it's proposed for the fall of 2022 that 40.7, 40.7% of math courses will be in-person. English, the numbers are worse, 76.8% were in-person in the fall of 2019. We're proposing that 34.4% be in-person in the fall of 2022. And were this a function of health concerns, I would understand, but when you look at some of these other numbers, that just doesn't make sense. For example, if you look at biology courses, biology was 94.4% before the pandemic, up to 74.1% in the fall of 2022. Chemistry was 100% before, and it's 100% in the fall of 2022. So, you know, I, I just encourage Dr. Blanca and the executive leadership team in conjunction with the WCC EA, I think we can do better. The Ann Arbor Public Schools are currently fully in-person, I believe the University of Michigan is in-person. I'm not sure what of our, what the, what our companion or what our sister institutions are doing, I've asked Dr. Blanca to inquire as to that, but I, I just do believe that we can do a whole lot better, and I don't think that anything is written in stone for fall of 2022 yet, so I would just, as a pep talk to all of us, let's try to do better, and hopefully for this fall, with your leadership, Dr. Blanca, we can push forward and push some of these numbers, which I think are distressingly low, higher. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments. Any other trustee comments this evening? President Blanca, do you have?
Oh, yes, I do.
Presidents' remarks for us.
Yes, I do.
We've been waiting for this.
And I, sure, and I would be happy to share the data.
I think you should.
With the other board members that I shared with. Trustee Landau, on his request, based on his request. I will get that to you actually tomorrow morning, okay, Vanessa? So you can take a look at it. All right, as trustees know, February is the month when we typically spend time in Washington DC, getting snowed in or whatever, attending the Community College National Legislative Summit, which is, is sponsored by the AAC, by the ACCT and the AAC. And again, with COVID, we weren't able to attend, some did attend, but we chose not to travel. But I would like to thank Chair Milliken for being a part of a virtual call during the summit with Senators Stabenow and Gary Peters to discuss community college legislative priorities. And I'd also like to recognize trustee McKnight Morton, who sits on the Michigan Community College Association Legislative Committee. She gives her time to be a part of her regular committee calls regarding MCCAs legislative advocacy agenda and policies affecting community colleges, and updates on behalf of trustees throughout the MCC. And in addition, I recently met with, God bless you, State Senator Jeff Irwin and Representative Felicia Brabeck, along with County Commissioner Jason Morgan, to discuss WCC's impact in the region, explore funding opportunities to support our college infrastructure and the expansion of community programming and the development in the county. And I have to say, State Senator Irwin and Representative Brabeck and Commissioner Morgan have really been supportive in working with our legislators, and hopefully we'll see something, but I, I can't thank them enough. Also, this is February as National CTE Month, which celebrates and promotes, you heard Dr. Reed talk a little bit about it, the benefits of career and technical education, and we work very diligently to make students aware of it. Our faculty are doing their own great work in helping spread the word about CTE to our high school students. In early year this month, our Transportation Technologies faculty and staff hosted the Skills USA High School Regional Competition. I love that, we hosted it, that's, that's cool. Well, we should, we're a college. Right in our own WCC Transportation Technology Lab, 63 students and their instructors from area high schools participated, and with several high school students taking home awards in auto service master tech division and the auto service maintenance and light repair division. And the top three finishers in each category will move on to Skills USA State Championship in Grand Rapids. And our own WCC faculty gave out prize packages and scholarships to the top five student winners, and encouraged local high schoolers to consider studies towards CTE career at WCC after high school. It took a team effort by our Transportation Technologies faculty to make this great outreach effort happen, including full-time faculty Mike Duff, Justin Carter, Alan Day, Sean Derone, Robert Lowing, Justin Morningstar, Rocky Roberts, Gary Sobri, and Tim Van Schoe. I hope I said his name correctly, good. And back on January 4th, our renowned welding department brought 111 high school students to campus from regional high school CTE programs to experience WCC in the WCC High School Welding Invitational. This is not a Skills USA event, but it's one of our college's biggest recruiting events, where we have the opportunity to show our excellent welding programs. The department awarded prizes to students in multiple categories, with the two prizers receiving a welding machine and a WCC scholarship. Prizes were provided by employers and sponsors from the local area, and thanks go to the faculty and staff in our welding department for promoting this great career option to young people, including Bradley Klink, Glenn Kay, Nathan Oliver, Alex Peskowski, Pesowski, Joe Ortiz, and Ashley Jones. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Jimmy Baber for your leadership, Dean Baber, thank you so much for all that you have done. And our favorite, Tree Campus. Again, we won again. So congratulate our Landscape and Grounds Department for their important role in helping the college receive Tree Campus Higher Education recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation for the sixth year in a row. We are one of 393 campuses nationwide and nine in Michigan to earn this honor. Because in large part of the incredible work of our Landscape and Grounds crews, the college meets the five high standards required by the Arbor Day Foundation, and even throughout the pandemic, they have made our outdoor campus a beautiful natural environment for our students, employees, and the community. And these are the same people that shovel our walks, clear our parking lots, and I just can't thank them enough for everything that they do to keep our campus safe and welcoming. Finally, a reminder that for the first time since November of 2019, the Washtenaw Economic Club event on March 24th will once again be held in-person, and you won't want to miss it. This is the really good one, they're all really good, but this one's really good. University of Michigan economists Gabriel Erlich and Donald Grimes will be presenting their always fascinating look at the Washtenaw County Economic Forecast. The data they present will be more valuable than ever as we continue to adjust to what's happened since the pandemic. This event will be at the Kensington Hotel in Ann Arbor, since, you know, our ML is under construction, it will be, we have.
The Graduate?
Yeah.
Not the campus in, the Graduate?
No, the Kensington.
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 Kensington, that's okay.
That's out on South State.
Right. Yes, by the mall. I know where the mall is. With limited seating, so please contact Vanessa if you'd like to attend. And I'd like to thank Associate Vice President Tucker for his leadership in organizing those. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, President Blanca.
You're welcome.
Next, I'd like to turn to the Facilities Development Report. VP Beschi, could you update us on things that you're working on these days, please?
An update of the two major capital projects we have going on.
Don't lose sight of that microphone beside you, would you? Thank you.
Is that better?
Good.
I'll begin with an update of the Morris Lawrence renovation project. What you see is a aerial view of the east entrance. All the framing is done, you'll notice that the roof is ready for the, the roof membrane, and the panels are going to be put on the side. If you look in the upper left-hand corner of the, the box on top of the roof, the mechanical panels, last month, we talked about removing all of the mechanical equipment that came out of that mechanical panels. Tomorrow, that equipment, the new equipment is going to go back in. So in the course of a month, we took the old equipment out and the new is going back in, so things are moving very quickly and fast with the renovation of the ML project. This is a photo of the ceiling of the lobby, and you'll noticed, again, the mechanical equipment is in place, there was a lot of coordination in the last couple of weeks with the AV equipment that's integrated into the lobby, projector screen, and, and so all of that work is coming along very well. Also, drywall framing, the plumbing rough-ins for the bathrooms is underway, so all of that work is under construction right now. In about a month, we're going to begin with the architectural finishes and actually begin putting tile on that, on those bathroom walls. So the project is, is moving along extremely quickly. Last month, we reported a lot of the work was going on in the ceiling, the mechanical, electrical, piping. It's mainly or mostly complete, and you'll notice now that we're actually coming behind and putting the ceiling grid in. So we're, we're getting out of the mechanical, electrical work in the ceiling and beginning to put the ceiling grid in and move down into the architectural finishes. Another shot of mechanical work and framing, you'll notice there's some framing going on still in the, in the office space, and, and one more example of the ceiling grid work. So all in all, the ML renovation project is tracking well, it's an aggressive schedule, but the work is moving along very quickly. Second capital project to report on is the Great Lakes Regional Training Center expansion. This project officially kicked off last month in January. The majority of the activity happening right now is, is outside where the expansion is to take place, we're prepping the area for the foundation. This photo was actually taken, taken last Wednesday, one day before the snowfall. Again, a lot of excavation work, a lot of work to be done on the, on the preparation for the expansion. This actually shows a trench that is excavated and ready for, for forms. Yesterday, they were forming the footings, and on Saturday, they're going to pour the concrete.
What kind of weather constraints do you face?
Pardon me?
What kind of weather constraints do you face with concrete and outdoor construction? Slow you down?
I mean, at this point, a real deep freeze, I mean, we, you know, we're, we're doing the site work on the expansion, and as long as there's not a lot of frost in the ground, I mean, the snow, snow and rain is going to make the, the site a little sloppy, but the real issue would be a, a deep freeze. Unfortunately, it's, we're, I think, out of, out of that area, so. At this point, really, weather is not going to come into factor.
Good.
So that's, yes?
Are we having any difficulty with pipeline and equipment and materials coming as we need them?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Are we having any difficulties with pipeline and, and materials arriving on time?
Supply lines?
Supply, ah-ha, supply lines and so forth?
So that is really the, the biggest challenge or, or focus, where all the energy is, it's on the procurement. It's on the procurement of the material and the labor at this point. In both projects, things are coming along very well. For example, at the Great Lakes Expansion, we're working Saturday to pour concrete for the footings because the steel is arriving next week. So things are, I mean, they've actually got to work six days a week to keep up with the delivery of materials.
Thank you.
That concludes an update on the capital projects. In addition, each month, there's a long list of deferred maintenance projects. There's a total of 17 active projects right now that are in different stages. Some are in design, some are in progress, and others are wrapping up. A few of these projects happen behind the scenes. And one project I'd like to note is number 13, the Energy Center Boiler Master Controls Valve Replacement. This was a project to both upgrade the controls for our boilers and automate some of the valves. And what I want to note is, we did an energy analysis between this year and last year from gas usage from October till February and compared it to a year ago. And in addition, there's a benchmark out there called Heating Degree Date. But long story short, we had a colder winter this year during that time period than we had last year, and we saved $10,000 in our gas. So the point I'm trying to make is our deferred maintenance program is paying off. We're paying off dividends on, and some of these behind-the-scenes projects, I just want to acknowledge and give credit to the team that's working on that.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Any questions?
Trustee Hatcher, you lead, and we'll come back to these--
Okay.
Your turn.
For some bizarre reason-- I'll take this off. I decided to take a deep look at the Deferred Maintenance Fund report and the Deferred Maintenance Projects. And it's really hard to put them together because they're not alphabetical and they're not, I mean, yours, the Deferred Maintenance Yellow Sheets are numbered, but the ones on the budget side aren't. And so sometimes it's interesting to note that the budget amount turned out to be less than the actual amount on the Yellow Sheets. But it's very hard to find number, you know, 1 on the C, tab C, and number 12 on tab D. So could you all get together?
That will address that and reconcile the cost or try to correlate the projects that were approved with the funding and the actual spend?
Yeah, I mean, even if you numbered the ones on the budget side, the same way you number the ones on the facility side, we could see what's going on. Because some of it, sometimes the money is more, not very often, but sometimes. And most of the time, the money that comes in in terms of the completion is less than the budgeted amount, which is kind of cool.
In many cases, that's obviously the goal.
Yeah, right, right. But, you know, I could spend all afternoon trying to say, where is the Lot 7 Transformer replacement in the budget?
And we can provide that next month.
I'd like to have some sort of--
President Blakka, do you want to get in on this, too?
Sure. Yes, we will, you know, next, this month coming up in March is our budget, right? It's our retreat.
Ooh.
So we could do that. But I want to talk to the new Vice President--
Yeah, I'm not trying to make more work.
No, I know you're not.
I'm just trying to be able to see it.
I don't want to promise you something and then not deliver next month because we just promised next month if we can't. But I'll give it to you in two months. No. Do you know what I mean? Yeah, I'll try for next month. Okay.
Trustee Davis?
Yes, actually--
Microphone.
I'll take this off. It sparked my memory when President Blakka had mentioned that we had received another Campus Tree Recognition Award. And this is about the path. And I know Trustee McKnight-Morton can expound on it a little bit more, but she had put a lot of effort in trying to secure through CINCOG with budgeting and stuff to get the path, or walkway path, or whichever, through, around the campus. And so it's been like out of sight, out of mind because I haven't seen it on our, on our Facilities Development Report of projects and such. Now, of course, a lot of things have transpired since the last time we spoke about it, but I hate to see it fall through the cracks and then we don't speak about it. I have, like on Clark Road, the backside of the campus-- It's done?
I think it's done. Where is it? I think it's complete.
Mm-hmm. Where is it?
It's where it's supposed to be.
Yeah. Okay, well then, okay, well then, that's awesome. Well then, answer this question then. The apartment complex on the backside, that intersection? Clark Road, that is our property right there, right? Because there's a stone wall or something when you're driving down. And it's just, it looked like someone had tried to excavate a pathway or something like that. And I had always assumed that that was our project. Yeah, yeah. So that is our-- I see, that's why I bring it up, because I had always assumed that that was part of our project. So it turns out that the project was already completed and we're done.
Okay, well then, never mind. That's awesome.
I mean, you don't know unless you ask, right? Because I'm telling you, every time I come to the board meeting and I'm looking at this patch of land that was, you know, cleared out, and then all of a sudden, the vegetation is coming back, I'm like, what was going on? So thank you, it's already done.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none? Thank you, VP Beschi. Great report. Old business now stares us in the face. Tab E, pull-ahead funding for technology infrastructure upgrade from FY '23 to FY '22. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve that an additional $1.5 million be transferred from the college's general fund to its technology fund in FY '22 instead of FY '23. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
And I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Did we discuss what the heck we're going to do in year FY '23 when we've already spent the money?
Well, it is to prepare us for FY '23.
Yeah, but we don't, we won't need $1.5 million.
Mr. Hunholdt is standing by with an answer to that question.
Mr. Kruger. And Hunholdt, thank you.
And Mr. Kruger.
Did we discuss it before? Did I miss?
What can answer that question, Ruth?
That's okay.
Look at this.
Uh-oh, the big guns have come to answer my question.
So the lead time is about six to nine months on most equipment that we buy, which is why we wanted to pull ahead funding, because most of the stuff will be still done and spent in FY '23. We just have to order it now, or it's going to be FY '24. So that's why--
So it's not extra?
No, no, it's pulling it ahead so we can order it, so it will be here in FY '23. Because if we didn't do that, we would order it in FY '23, and we couldn't get the stuff until probably FY '24. So, yeah, it's, right now, lead times are tremendous.
So FY '23, you're not going to come and say, we need a million five?
Very well.
Yeah, we may. We can't promise.
Great, thanks.
Trustee DeVarty?
So I just want to ask for a clarification. The money will still be spent in fiscal year '23. You're just asking for authorization now so it can be authored, so it can be ordered?
So when it comes to when it's actually spent, that's something for Mr. Hunholdt here, but my understanding is that we get billed for it when it comes, and if, most equipment will not be here until FY '23.
Gotcha.
Is that accurate?
We will reflect the transfer from the general fund to the technology fund--
Thank you so much.
With this approval.
Correct.
But in terms of our annual budget, the money is actually getting spent next year, or next fiscal year. I'm just curious. We've already authorized it, it's just the timing that we're looking at.
The cash proceeds will more than likely be liquidated in fiscal '23. It will be reflected in this current year's budget, though. You will see the transfer from the general fund in the current year.
Okay. Thank you.
We're good? Any other questions, discussion? Let's proceed with that roll call, please, Vanessa.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The funding has been pulled ahead, as they say. Next, we have Campus Logic Student Forms Software Contract Renewal. It's tab F in your packet. And the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a three-year contract with Campus Logic for student forms software not to exceed $162,501. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And support?
Support.
Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
The recommendation is approved. Thank you. New business now, and an opportunity for CIO Kruger to come back and speak with us. I think we have a PowerPoint presentation coming up that will explain tabs G and H that are in our package tonight. Mr. Kruger?
I think I'm a little bit too tall for this microphone, so if you can't hear me, please let me know, and I'll bend down a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. So thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to come and speak to you a little bit about our network upgrade project. The multi-year plan was scaled back to a two-year plan. I'm sorry. The two-year plan was scaled back to a three-year plan due to the impact of COVID. And then, due to the lead time implications, which we just got done talking about, we need to order the Year Two and Year Three equipment now. So we just covered that, so I won't go into too much more detail. But-- Let's see. Yeah, so the 1.5 million pull-ahead funding from Year Three was discussed just a few minutes ago. And Year One, we were very busy. We installed distribution switches, access layer switches, wireless access points, and Wi-Fi controllers. And the feedback that we got from everyone across campus, including faculty, was fantastic about the network changes that we did. There's still much more to be done, but there was very positive feedback on what we did. And what we need to do right now is we need to do more distribution switches, access switches, more access points, and half of the campus fiber. So that's what we need to do. And it goes without saying, I think, that the stable and appropriately robust network is critical to the success of Washtenaw Community College, not only just the online operations, but the on-campus operations as well. Okay, so what do we need? So the recommendation is that on tab G, the college recommends that the Single Mode Fiber Installation Contract be awarded to Challenger Technologies LLC for an amount not to exceed $166,936.63. Challenger Technologies LLC is our sole source provider, which maintains the continuity and consistency of our fiber installations across campus. And then on tab H, with network equipment, the college obtained a MyDeal, which is a state-of-Michigan-approved purchasing consortium, quote, "from an approved vendor." And the college recommends that the Board of Trustees approve a contract to purchase network infrastructure equipment from CDW for an amount not to exceed $1,793,464.57.
Are there questions from the trustees? Trustee DeVarty?
Are these, now that we have these bids and you're asking for our authorization, are these consistent with what we anticipated with our budget?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
And will the expenditures be made this year, the actual outlays of money, or will they be made in two different budget years?
I'm going to let Mr. Hunholdt here answer that question from the budgeting standpoint.
So we would execute contracts and POs in the current year, provided the funding that we just approved, but we would most likely receive those goods and pay for those goods.
Thank you.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
I don't know if this is going to apply or not when I ask the question. Seeing how we're trying to look at broadband with extended out to parts of Ypsilanti, preferably the Harriet Street, the Park Ridge Center, are we going to be able to do that there? Are we going to be able to have some extension from us? I don't know how that can work, but, you know, because that's what we want to do--
Yes.
So that, yeah, go ahead.
So we worked with Brandon Tucker, so we have been able to enhance the network connectivity out of the Park Ridge Center. We've done that.
Okay. So this will be a part of the extension?
No, no, that's not a part of that.
This is just for here?
That's already--
That's just for here. But that was a separate project that we did to enhance their network connectivity.
At the center?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Fleming, you always have great insight into these things. Any thoughts that you want to share with us while we're on the subject?
So this fiber is to give about 50% of campus fiber?
Yeah, so in Year One, we did approximately 50%, and then we did some other projects kind of midstream, and this will finish out--
Oh, so now, oh, so we will then have 100% fiber, then?
Yeah, we'll then have 100% of fiber. However, I'm not going to, I'm not going to suggest that there will never be any additional fiber, because as you know, but I'll explain it for everyone else, fiber is like the highway across campus, right? It's the freeway. It connects at super speeds across campus. So as we identify other needs, such as video cameras or other things that need on campus, or maybe there's, there's an area that's not as robust as it needs to be, those will be much smaller projects, but in essence, this completes the major issues, the major fiber across campus.
Okay, good.
Any other questions, any other trustees? Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Please, go ahead.
For Challenger Tech, what is the sole source justification? Why are they the sole source?
So that's a, that's a great question, and do you want me to answer that? Do you want to answer that? Go, okay. So anytime you're doing wiring on a campus, and, you know, fiber is, you know, wiring, obviously, you want a single place to point a finger, so to speak. One thing you want to avoid is, okay, we're having a network connectivity problem, I'm going to point a finger at here or here. It's not consistent, it's not done the same way, it's not the same standards. And so you really want one vendor that you can, you know, know that you have a good relationship with them, that they know what they're doing, but that also that you know who did it if there's ever any kind of a problem. So it's really from a quality standpoint, you know, you really want someone that you can know did a good job, and that you could know where to go to if there's an issue.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to tab I. We have a contract that we want to take a look at. It's the Examity Learning Validation and Remote Proctoring Contract. And EVP Hearns is here to describe it to us, please.
So you all have been familiar with us discussing Examity. It's our online proctoring software that we use so that we can proctor online tests. In the past, we've come back to the board in the last year or so for this previous academic year to have an increase from our approved $75,000, just because we had so much usage of that online proctoring tool. Today, we're coming to the board asking for an increase of $50,000, which is less than what we asked for last year, and the majority of that will be funded by CARES Act, as it was last year.
Any questions for EVP Hearns? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab J, we turn to now. And VP Swick is going to talk to us about the appointment of the 2022 Board Negotiating Team for the Washtenaw Community College Education Association Full-Time Teaching Faculty Union Contract. Mr. Swick?
Thank you. This is Tab J in your packages, and you can see the individuals identified. Obviously, I'm identified as the chief negotiator. I'm pleased to have a number of the folks we're recommending to you today, our prior participants in this collective bargaining. They obviously bring a wealth of knowledge, having successfully performed this process in the past. So this, I'm very excited about this team. And the only thing I would add is that, to be determined at the bottom, is a staff position, which has recently been added to the Human Resources Department, a Labor and Employee Relations Analyst, who will be supporting our negotiations work in terms of maintaining our records and documents and taking notes at the negotiating sessions. That's all the information I have to provide.
Thank you. Any comment, any questions? Trustee Hatcher?
Is the position of Labor Employee Relations Analyst posted or filled or?
It's posted currently.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee DeVarty?
So we had a closed session to talk about employment negotiations coming up, contracts. And I know these contracts are coming up pretty quickly. Would it be helpful to move this, establishing this committee at tonight's meeting as opposed to next month's meeting?
No, I think it's all right to leave it to next month's meeting. We haven't had formal negotiating sessions scheduled yet, and I believe if the action's taken at next month's meeting, will be well-served.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as this, this is established in the agenda for discussion this evening and to be put up for next month. We'll get to it then.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. We've got revision to the 2022 schedule of monthly board meetings for action. It's Tab K. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise their 2022 schedule of monthly board meetings and hold the March 22, 2022, monthly board meeting at 6:00 PM at the Health and Fitness Center at WCC across the street on Huron River Drive. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, we need a roll call, please.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The recommendation is approved, and we have a companion measure here, the establishment of annual spring retreat. It's an action item. It's Tab L. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise their 2022 schedule of monthly board meetings and establish and hold its annual spring retreat on March 22, 2022, at 3:00 PM at the Health and Fitness Center at WCC over here on Huron River Drive. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Support.
And I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll, Vanessa.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
A retreat it is. Thank you. And at this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn this monthly meeting.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Any applause?
It was a good meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.